It's, uh, four o'clock. We're gonna get started. We're still waiting on one, but we're gonna go ahead and get started. Cause we've got a lot of stuff to cover this evening. Uh, the purpose of this study session is kind of a talk about the city hall space and needs assessment. Uh, report. Scott?
Yes. We're gonna introduce some Molly.
Okay. Excellent.
How's everybody?
Good. How are you?
Good.
So I just wanna give a little summary of how we got to where we are here. So we issued an RFQ in February to find a design consultant to help us evaluate this facility and a couple of other facilities for a new city hall. And we received five responses from that. And we interviewed the top three firms and then we selected Keydini. You may recognize their name. They are also the design team that worked on our police station. And they have a lot of the same sub consultants on this team as well. They are using Kiefer Brothers for local cost information who also worked on our police station. So they were charged with looking at our existing city hall facility and determining if a renovation in addition was possible or if we needed to build a new facility. They also looked at the common police courthouse and annex facilities and at the old police station site. So I will give you a copy of the presentation afterwards. And I do ask you to hold your questions until the end, cause we would like to have the whole presentation at once and then have the questions at the end and then, you know, we don't have very much time to talk tonight, cause of the meeting at five. Um, so Chris Keydini is here with us today, as well as Andrea Diavando. She is the interior designer and Steve Mueller is our project manager.
And just, just add one thing, and that is that the expectation that I hear is not that we'll make a decision tonight. We're right here to, to, to gather information, listen to information, ask questions, so that then we can have information that we can subsequently, uh, establish direction for, for the city. So we're not, uh, we're not expecting that tonight you're gonna decide, uh, a location of anything or anything like that, so.
Appreciate it. Thank you. I'm Chris Keydini with Keydini Architects. Go through this pretty quickly. We did have a full team on this, so this was not only an architectural review and, and indicated. Kiefer Brothers helped us with a lot of, uh, cost estimating as well as constructability. We had mechanical engineers, structural engineers, civil engineers. We had a full team that helped us analyze the sites, look at existing conditions. We had full existing condition reports, structural and MEP and architectural. So this was a team effort. A little bit of overview on our firm. We do a lot of municipal and government work. We also do a lot of renovation and adaptive reuse. Again, a lot of it is in the public sector for municipalities. Quick overview of the process, kinda going up over the RFQ. Study criteria was the analysis of the city hall space needs. Look at some recommendations for the existing city hall, using additions and renovations. Having code compliance as one of the criterias. Again, common police courthouse and annex, again, additions and renovations. Code compliance and seismic code requirements as a constraint. New city hall and alternative sites, and we helped look at and size some of the alternative sites. Looking at the existing city hall site, well, of the, of the alternate sites, the two that we chose to look at were the existing city hall site that was both additions and renovations to this building, as well as a new building on this site. And we looked at the former police station site as well. We developed cost estimates for, for the two alternates, alternatives that, that we moved forward with. The study goals, first was for the public, improve access and communication, safety and security, staff and public separation, and improve and encourage staff, communication, collaboration and innovation. Again, it's a unique opportunity for the city and for the staff to explore, how should you be working and how will you work in the future? I think one thing to point out with this study is it's not all encompassing and complete. However, it would be chosen to move forward at this point, there's a whole re-vetting process. So we, we push it as far as we think we need to, kinda draw a line at that point. And however it were, if it were to move forward, there's a whole circling back around to re-verify thing. Some of the considerations, again, public interaction, interdepartmental collaboration, security, technology. Once more, how can you work most effectively and efficiently together? The process overview, it's very collaborative. We met several times through the past probably six months. Building consist, consensus, testing different alternatives all the way through. So the first step was really the, the space and oper, operational needs analysis. Lets us, gives us a glimpse at, at how much space we think the building's going to require and, and what could be required in the future. At the same time, we were looking at existing facility condition assessments of this existing building, the common please and the, uh, the annex. We looked at some alternative sites, what size site, given that space needs analysis, parking requirements and everything, what size site would be required for the facility? Once, once we looked at those, we, we went into concept development, testing the sites, looking at floor plan layouts. So it's not only site testing, but what's the building look like? Who needs to be next to who and how big is each department? If we're looking at a renovation in addition, uh, to, to a facility, phasing is important. Is that portion that's gonna stay up? Is it going to be occupied and how can we work around that? FF and E, furniture, fixture and equipment, future growth, same for the new facility analysis. And looking at all the alternatives that we came up with, you know, what operates the most efficiently out of all the, the facilities? Cost analysis, always important. And one of the things we really like to point out is a total program budget versus a construction budget. A lot of times, the numbers that's heard is the construction budget. So that's the contractor hard cost. Total program budget considers, what does it take to move into that building? When you actually sit down at your desk, turn your computer on and start work? There's, there's two different things there. A lot of times, the two get confused and, and question, you know, another municipality built their building for X amount of dollars. So we always have to make sure that we're comparing apples to apples. We reviewed, presented a lot of concept alternatives and then we dwindled, dwindled it down to the, the two or three alternatives that we're looking at here and put cost estimates on. We have, knock on wood, it's, it's, it's been a tough environment lately, but we have been very successful with our public bid projects. I think as architects and again, working with Kiefer, there's a lot of go, going back and forth. We, we would live with the drawings a lot. So, you know, we have to make sure everybody's comparing and pricing accurate things. So we, we take cost estimating very seriously. So on, on to your project. The first phase of the process was a space needs analysis. This is a summary. It's hard to read, but she has the handout too. This really, every dark line is every single department. We had probably two sheets, two to three sheets for every department outlining every staff member, um, every space needed. One of the things, first round, you know, you see a lot of conference rooms, a lot of shared spaces that are actually in each department. So one of our first vetting processes is to see how much of that can we really make true shared space? So we end up with conference centers and some things like that. This space assessment broke down to about 38,000 square feet is where we're seeing this facility ending. That includes a 35% gross up. So outside of the office space, that may be 100, 120 square feet. That, that accounts for connecting corridors, structure, mechanical shafts, we have stairs and things like that. We've again, been successful. We see this as the starting point. And typically, we can gain efficiencies of 15 to 20% when we really start working through a real building at that point. Very similar process with the police station. I think we ended up. The police station was 37?
Thirty-five, eight seventy-four.
Thirty-five, eight seventy-four. And we, we probably started north of 40,000 square feet when we first did this process on that. And it worked backwards from there. Some typical, uh, office layouts. When we plan a facility, one of the things we look at and in the space needs, especially knowing that there could be a lot of, of new furniture. Furniture systems today are a lot more efficient and effective, a lot less paper, so it considers that. So once more, that's another way that we can realize more efficiencies when we plan a building overall. So this kinda starts showing you the big blocks, the great big blocks on each, each line here are the total department size. So each color is a different department and all the little blocks are how it kinda breaks down into personnel, offices, conference spaces and things. Just to give you an idea of how we start breaking down that, that space needs matrix, the spreadsheet into, to real form. The plan here that you see is the police station plan. Just showing how it was starting to come together on that site. We even initially, from the interview, just some information that we had, trying to test the site. If we come up with X number of square feet for the building, we think we need X number of parking spaces. And we were looking anywhere from 1.6 to 1.8 acres. And I think we actually needed a little bit more. These have about 100 cars each. We ended up with about 160 cars is what the city would need. We looked at the existing police station site. Probably one of the biggest constraints on that site, one of the reasons we really did not push that one forward is parking. Um, it's very tight. We're probably about 60 to 70 spaces short on this one. What we were looking at was 75 spaces for the public, 75 spaces for staff, which would be separated and secured. And about 16 spaces for, um, municipal vehicles. 75 staff spaces, we pared down a bit, or the set, yeah, pared down a bit. But we also considered that from large council meetings and things, that area could possibly be open for other parking, public parking. Some of the concept sketches that we went through. Top left is an addition and renovation to the existing, uh, this existing city hall. Same with the bottom left. The, the right side begins to show a new concept of a possible new city hall. Again, another new city hall on this site, leaving the existing city hall. And then we also looked at common pleas and the annex. Both of those, we, we saw that the level, the multiple level changes in the buildings were gonna be a challenge. Pretty small spaces and one of the goals with this is the collaboration. A lot more open office than you see in this existing city hall right now. Again, parking was a challenge here. And, and we really thought that to get this site to work, you'd probably be looking at a parking structure. Looking at something about $15,000 in parking space. You're probably spending three to four million dollars really quickly there. Some of the renderings we did, again, of common pleas and annex shows, make sure that could be a possible parking structure as well next to those. So those kinda show some of the reasons why the police site and the, uh, the common pleas and annex site were kind of eliminated from further, uh, looking at it. So what we did was the two main, the main focus was this site. Two alternatives were additions and renovations to this existing building and a new, a completely new city hall facility. This just gives again, a picture of the way we go about putting together a building. Shows all the notes and things in. Shows some of the multiple iterations that we looked at. The upper left-hand side shows when we looked at it in back. You can kinda see a pink line taking a diagonal through the site. That's a large storm sore with an easement back there. So we can't impinge on that. That's why it kinda stair-step. The site also slopes off on that slide towards the bottom. So one of the concerns with citing the building further back on the site was visibility. You have a large federal building next door. The parking lot that's out towards Independence Street would actually be higher than the building. So that was gonna be a, about a two and a half story building getting the slope. So you really wouldn't see much of that facility from the street. Again, that's what kinda hinted at pushing the building towards the front, getting a good, getting good visibility for a new city hall. The other plans on here just shows some rough diagrams of slowly coming to a concept of, of the, uh, new city hall pushed forward. One of the things, one of the reasons we didn't push a lot of planning forward on additions and renovations was this building doesn't, again, doesn't lend itself well, opening up a lot of spaces. We did find that the corridor walls, the double loaded corridors, those walls are not structural, so we could take those off. Again, we're probably looking at about a 20% inefficiency of trying to plan an existing structure versus what we would build new. Seismic retrofit in this building is also a, uh, uh, an implication. We looked at that analysis on the, the former building on the police station site. That one as well, from a cost standpoint, just really didn't make sense. Cost and building efficiency standpoint, didn't really make sense to keep them. Once more, just showing the development of site plans, building plans, interior elevations. How, how the, the exterior of the building kinda kept pushing forward. Both, we use the technique of both computer models and hand-drawn drawings. Bowen did help us with a full civil plan, looking at some of the grading, so we could get some earthwork quantities. Again, we did a pretty tight cost estimate spreadsheet that Kiefer produced for us, very similar to what we used and worked together on the police station with. This gives you some idea of the fall down to the lower, um, left-hand corner on the site. We're also showing on the, on the right-hand side, that you would have the possibility of maybe some kind of residential property that wouldn't have to be part of city hall site when Fountain Street is taken through. Quick rendered site plan. We didn't keep the building quite as elevated as it is right now, trying to get that link to the street that would, it would cut through the hillside. The parking to the, the left of the building would be the public building, public parking. A large parking lot, um, to the right is staff parking and municipal vehicles. Lower level of the building, so it's about two and a half stories. We don't have a full lower level. They keep it where we can, get some daylight. You can see the white area is a courtyard on this. We have information technology, employee, employee wellness and the break room are the main, large features on this floor. The gray corridors that you see, anything that's gray, that's showing level of security that is staff only. Going to the first floor, the main level. The entry is to the left. You come in, you have the council chambers on the right and a community room on the left. So the yellow area is public circulation space. Then you can see as you get back further into the building, it turns gray and that would only be staff circulation. We've got a terrace going out towards Independence. We have a conference center there too, the two pink rooms. That corridor that's showing gray there has meant that, that staff could bring in, um, the public through one side or they can access it on their own from the other. So, you know, you don't have the public wandering through the facility and you really don't have public going back into the departments themselves. We see those layers of security quite frequently now. Back to the back of the facility is development services, takes up the large pink area on the right. Customer service and development services are towards the center of that. We have a public staircase that does go up to the second floor. Second floor, we have city manager, human resources, finance and the legal department. The lobby there is a public lobby. It's in yellow, but once more, public can't go back on their own into the departmental spaces. We have two terraces that were suggested on either side, north and south. Those could also be future enclosed spaces for any growth. And the large white area, um, to the left, some is attic space or high two-story space over the council chamber or the community room. Some of the others could be, could be future expansion space as well. Quick renderings of the facility. That would be the front, front rendering facing west. Night view. That's looking from Independence up towards the building, so you can get an idea of the grade change. It would be on Independence. End of the cost estimate. So we looked at the, the first one is the additions and renovations to this existing city hall. The total building area ended up being just over 42,000 gross square feet. The existing city hall as it stands, basement, first floor and second floor is 24,205 square feet. We looked at taking basically this council chamber section off, so we would be taking away 6,507 square feet. The renovation cost itself, about $280 a square foot. And it was funny, we, we, you know, even Kiefer and ourselves, you know, we, we used their information and we kinda came back around with some of the cost information we had, just as a verification and we were really close on both of them. So the renovation, construction cost estimate at $280 a square foot is just under $5 million. We have a $500,000 allowance, exterior repair, which gives us a renovation construction cost of just about $5.5 million, $308 a square foot. On new construction, again, you'll see that the, the new bill, all-new building was just around 38,000 square feet. Excuse me. We felt that we could, again, some planning inefficiencies with the existing building, but we would probably need about 20% more space to make that up and be able to plan that. That's how the, we get to 42,000 and the new construction is at 24,362. At 308 dol, yeah, 308, no, at 360 a square foot gives me the, the eight million. Gives me a renov, a new construction cost for the 24,000, eight million, 770,000 dollars. $360 a square foot. So that's a renovation and addition, uh, subtotal would be 14,225,000 dollars. The construction cost includes contractor overhead and profit, performance bond, audiovisual. And we're carrying a 15% design contingency. There are several contingencies in here right now and I didn't, I didn't pull back from any of them. We kinda consider with a 15% dot design contingency, you know, you can see things like soils, abatement, things like that. We would also say about half of that, maybe hours from a design standpoint, as we're going through and we're finding, we're diving guys, crossing Ts and making things a little bit more, more depth definitive. So the 15% design contingency, and you'll see down below, we have an owner contingency too. Probably would not have all of these stacked completely on top of each other like they're shown here, but just to be conservative. So 15% design contingency on this is about $2 million, just over. We have a phasing premium as well, part of the building's going to remain occupied. It's gonna cost us a little bit more to keep existing systems up, so that's 1.4 million dollars. Seismic retrofit, again, using some of the information that we went through in the police department, is about $100 a square foot for the existing building, that's 17,000 square feet that we're keeping. Once more, it includes a 15% design contingency. We've included furniture in this as well with a contingency at 1.5 million dollars. So that gets a construction cost of 18,974,000 dollars, 451 a square foot. Then we get into developing the total program budget. We've got A and E fees, soft costs, owner contingencies. Soft costs are a lot of accounting, administrative, legal permits, um, again, to make sure that we're covering everything. One of the things to note, that you, these, these numbers are really for today. So as we move forward, we're seeing right now about a 2% per quarter escalation. Also seen with the tariffs and things like that, we've seen some people tagging on a 5% contingency just to be safe. This would not include phone, computer, data systems. A lot of that's going to be moved. Moving expenses would have to be talked about, temporary facilities. And once more, we're suggesting that the owner carry a 5% contingency through construction, which is included in that whole program budget number. That brought us to that 23, yeah, 23,812,000 dollars. Looking at an all-new city hall, we'd be 38,138 gross square feet. At $360 a square foot is 13,754. Once more, contractor overhead and profit, performance bond, audiovisual contingencies included in that. Furniture estimate, demountable partitions are included there. That has a design contingency. Total construction cost is about 15,169, 398 a square foot. Technical engineering fees, soft costs, owner contingency brings us up to 19,38,127 dollars. So pretty substantially below additions and renovations costs. Same exclusions, we need to watch escalation per quarter, watch market contingencies. And you should carry a 5% owner instruction contingency when it goes into construction. Yes. All of these square foot costs are building and site, so this is a complete project. Again, total program budget, we're looking at you to be able to move in, A1, be ready to work. That's the biggest gap that we see, even working with, whether it's a, a, a public project, religious project. It's that gap between construction and moving in and sitting down at your desk that typically gets lost. This is just a quick fly-around of, of renderings that we showed and we clipped from this as well. Just to give you an idea, the federal building's in the background there. So that would be the, the side where you had the kinda the lower walkout area for the break room. Both of the terraces that you see here on each side could be future expansion space as well. Do you have any questions or?
Um, so the, the renovation, it was about, almost like 10 million? Is that primarily due to the seismic?
Where you got, you know, we're, we're building more square footage and building, we're at 42,000 square feet versus the 38. And, yeah, you've got a, one point.
Two of those inefficiencies.
Right. We just don't have the space then, you know, the width of the space becomes restrictive. And then you have 1.7 million dollars for the seismic retrofit, $100 a square foot. Yeah, and it's, and then when we renovate this existing building, it's all new mechanical systems in it. So it's a complete gut renovation.
And then for the new construction, that, that 19 million, did that? And then for the new construction, that, that 19 million, did that, that include office for?
Sure.
Was there any discussion on if you were to build new, um, where staff would go?
Uh, they talked about the, some vac, there's some vacancies in the city right now that they could occupy some form of being box retail, you can take that to where.
But any rental, that does, that's not included in?
Not, no.
If we're talking new construction, uh, was there ever any thought to not tearing this building down to a new building was built, maybe use the back part of this lot?
Yeah, that was, that was the one site plan. So that's the upper left-hand corner, kinda the orange box in this one, um, where we looked at, and we had, you know, you can see the block plans of the other building pushed forward, and we had block plans for this one too, but the feeling was the grade falls off so quickly in the back, and, and, and looking at a two and a half story building, if you will, because that grade fall, it would be really difficult to see the building from the street. I think coming back past the federal building going east, you would probably get a decent view of it, but I think coming the other direction it would-
Well, I was thinking if, if Fountain Street goes through, and eventually if you, if a new building is built behind this building and you tear this building down, then you've got a view from Independence, and you've got Fountain.
But would you use a facing fountain?
I don't know, I'm gonna have to, I'm not a architect or engineer.
I would assume they would still face it to Independence, but just build this, you know, build it in the parking lot, and then tear this down and make this parking after construction's completed, right? So you'd still, I, there'd still be some sort of visibility. Does it drop, does the grade drop off that severely?
It drops pretty bad.
Is it? Yeah.
And, and that's, and that's one of those things, I think, where we, we, we pursued two alternatives here, and I think that's one of the things that you could look at as you come back around to this, if this moves forward, is we've decided, you know, a new building's probably the way to go, and then look at some siding options of that. And, you know, that's one of the things we always come back around.
I'm just thinking of the disruption and the cost and everything of moving everybody out of this building and moving all our services somewhere else, you know, for a year or more.
What would be the timeline, uh, start to finish on a project like this?
Construction timeline?
Yeah.
It's probably a good 14 to 16 months.
Right, so we would have to pay to move everyone out of this building into another facility for a year and a half.
One of the things that we did talk about is the possibility of using common pleas, courthouse and the annex as a temporary home for staff while this was under construction, which really would activate some, so, the common day, island possibility. It all would not fit there, some, they have to go to other firms or current facilities or something, and find others, but that was one consideration that we had. There are lots of good consideration of this will be an active construction site, even if we could come back in a particular time, and it will be incredibly disruptive, probably there's a safety considerations having public come here to inhabit this, so.
Parking could be a one issue.
I could see that if you were gonna do either one, that you still would wanna move out.
Well, I think-
Either site, okay.
I, I think we could fully bet those saying, those saying, I think, you know, they're saying that it looks like maybe it's an idea to stay on, but there's a lot, a lot of positives to that, there might be some positives to being back. Still moving out, lowering the grade, you know, you could actually, when you tear this down, you could actually lower the grade so you could daylight some from Independence, and as you get Fountain through, there may be some things you could do. There's a lot of things that are moving around there, and you could, uh, perhaps, uh, you know, when you change, when you, when you bring Fountain through, then, then you could change grade there too. So I, I think there's a lot of ways, but we're not really asking, you know, make that decision. I think, make a lot of good points, I think they've made a lot of good points and stuff they're gonna have to weigh down and figure out which way it would go. I think the, the, I think the big thing to weigh going forward is, uh, police, old police station doesn't look like a viable site, common pleas doesn't look like a viable site for city hall, so we're gonna need to move forward with, you know, disposing of the, of the police station, you know, once we do, do some things there, and then, and then we'll have to study at some point what we're gonna do with the common pleas and the annex, so there's some study necessary there. But if you're comfortable moving forward, that this would be the site, and it would likely be a new building, that's kinda the level of decision-making we're thinking you're gonna need to make in the next, you know, the next months.
Here's a question for you, is, is the, is the making Fountain Street through a conversation?
We already, it's, it's in TTF.
It's in TTF. So, Paul's-
Yeah, it's in TTF.
Okay.
Yeah.
So selling off housing lots is a conversation?
Well-
That was something that, we had the, the room on that side of the, the property, and we were looking at other ways to raise money to help fund the project, so we felt we could, our street or developer to use some housing on that portion of the property. Just an idea, we threw it on the site plan, there's townhomes there. It is a difficult site in terms of geography, it does smokeball considerably there.
Does it have good view? As you'd think, up here on that, up on that hill, there'd be a great view, beautiful view of that street.
I'd say it is, pretty good.
Yeah.
Down, down street, we'll just drive the street. Townhomes would have access to Fountain, and that's where the parking lot has on that city hall. There is, you know, that would be, we're doing the estimates of Fountain Street pushing We also thought having the building present in Independence, you know, downtown, you have the buildings that are right up on the street, that's very helpful downtown districts, and so you, and you having that building present, and that's another reason to look
So there will be copious amounts of conversations about this-
Oh, yeah.
Going forward, right? Because I've got just a million questions running through my brain on this. It just seems like this is a lot for a one-hour study session.
Well, there's also a chance to acquire property behind our current property that goes back toward William, which, on Fountain Street. I don't know what that, I don't know what that property's like and what it's, what the- I mean, there, there are all sorts of possibilities. I just, I am a firm believer that city hall needs to stay downtown, and I don't wanna see it go out west, I don't wanna see it somewhere else in the community, don't have property there anyway, but, uh, I'm a firm believer in our downtown revitalization, and the city hall needs to be part of that, so.
He gives us a starting point to know that, you know, going back, uh, the Gary, uh, Mayor Rediger's tenure, talked about what we could do if, if, if common pleas would be viable, and now at least we know that those two sites, sites are off, kinda off the board. We've got work to do to decide what we wanna do with common pleas, annex, and then, uh, my biggest concern is how we fund a 23 million dollar new city hall. Or, or 18, or 18 and 19.
19, yeah.
19, so, um-
I'll say 20.
Yeah.
By the time we do it.
So, but, that's, I mean, it gives us a good starting point. I'm, I'm, like Dan said, you know, we're gonna have, this is probably a couple of study sessions, if not more, multiple, so.
Like I said, I've got a million questions for this already, so.
Start writing them down.
I, believe me, I already have. So, uh, in and among this, this architectural study, did we also get a list of improvements that are needed at common pleas in order to make it viable space? Okay.
Yeah, pretty much.
Yeah, we had the-
Cool.
Yeah, it was a structural, structural analysis and mechanic, MEP, mechanical electrical information.
Yeah, because that's one of those buildings we're not getting rid of, and so we've gotta make sure that we have a path forward for that as well.
Just briefly, I know this has been discussed, forgive me, but we, we, that building is not adequate for city hall, why?
Base.
Just the square, the total square footage, and just can't make it work for-
It's one, I guess, it's something where we, we look like we have to, for a structure, parking, which is incredibly costly.
What did you say that was per square foot, usually?
About 15,000 dollars of space.
Our parking space.
I mean, that building probably has the same problems as this building.
And we, and we need a bare minimum of 160, I believe he said?
160, yeah.
Here goes the calculator, the banker's got his calculator out.
Yeah, three.
Yeah, it's, it's parking, it's, it's just gross space, and then it's also the interaction of the space, so.
Same, same issue as here.
Things that are here, but actually even a little, little worse because it's, because of its configuration, and because of the tight square footage, and because it has no parking, or not no parking, it has, has less parking than we have here. So all, all three of those major things are, are more difficult there than they are even here.
I think when we really looked at those two buildings, they would have been more of an accent or historical accent to a, a larger building put in between them or tying them together. The annex itself, I think, has three levels, so getting the levels to all play well together was gonna challenge as well. Common pleas is almost all bearing walls, and there's been a sequence of additions, so you can't just open up the space. It was one advantage here, that, that the corridors, a lot of school buildings like this, we see, those corridor walls are bearing walls too, but it was not the case here, so we were able to open up some of the- Thing about timeframe, yeah, if we kind of, like, we know that, have kind of an idea about when we wanna, really?
Well, funding is a, is a huge, you know, one of the things to, to solve probably first.
Selling some cookies.
I think what, what we wanted to know now was kind of a, an idea of, is this the place, you know, this, this location or one of the other ones? I think we have that recommendation, that the recommendation is to, to put a, uh, new facility here on this, this place, on this, uh, site.
Or renovate.
Or, or renovate, but I think the, I think really the, the, the numbers say, um, build The police station doesn't really work, so, you know, move forward with, uh, maybe selling that place, and then we'll have to study what is an appropriate use at common pleas once we take possession of common pleas and the annex, what, what's the right use of those buildings.
We don't really, we don't really take possession of those until the new courthouse is built.
Well, we take, we take possession of the annex and the grounds, uh, first of this year.
What I'm talking about, common pleas.
But, but, uh, common pleas is not until they move, yes.
Twenty, twenty.
But do we need to have some, even if it's a loosely defined timeline, I mean, we just spent quite a bit of taxpayer money to find out what we can do and where we can do it. At some point, aren't we gonna have to, you know, start setting some timelines on what we're gonna do?
Yeah, I think, I think that's the discussion going forward is, is, you know, what, what are we looking for as far as where we would raise money, or where we would dedicate money, and, and all of that? But now that we kinda have an idea of how much money that is, where it is, and what to do with the others, so if you decide to sell the police station, then you can dedicate that money to go toward this, if you, you know, I mean-
We couldn't do any of that, make any of those plans, even have discussions, discussions that would, that would make sense until we did this.
Sure.
No.
I don't think we're, we're, I, we're not advocating setting it on the shelf and quit talking about it, we're saying this begins the next, the next conversation, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
I've just got one last question for you. In, in most instances, does new construction win out over renovation?
Especially when we're looking at the seismic upgrade. You get so much more, once you hit a threshold of 20% renovation cost in some building, you have to meet all of the, that really put me in, it was almost the same evaluation we did for the, the east part.
Okay. Yeah, that's what I was, I was thinking whenever, whenever we approved this, this study a couple of months ago, I remember thinking to myself, you know, I know this is gonna come back with a new, they're gonna recommend new building, and, you know, that, I, I just feel like it never comes back as, as, oh, what you currently have is, is pretty good.
But I agree, I think it helps that at least now there's a number out there that we know.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very, very much, appreciate it. Thank you, thank you.